All right, looks like we're on.
I can see you.
Yep, okay. Welcome, everybody, to the June 16, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I see that we have some attendees this evening. There will be stated times where you guys are free to speak. So we'll designate that. When you do speak, we'll ask you to clearly pronounce your name and your address, and then you'll have the floor. For now, we're going to conduct a few of our agenda items, and then we'll get into action in a little bit. So, Charlene, can you start with the roll call, please?
Tom Alberti.
Here.
Timothy Moore.
Here.
Lori Millet.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Maxanne Dobson.
Here.
We don't have Greg Tallon.
He's excused.
Okay. Bill Coy.
Here.
John Cashel.
Here.
Okay, Bill Coy will be the Selectman's Representative this evening as a voting member. I'm happy to announce that we do not, no longer need to read the executive order. It has expired. So we've got that out of the meeting practice. Couple of notes. At this time, there are some, some possibilities that a member could still attend remotely. If that becomes an issue, we can talk about what the requirements are. Not an issue, but if that becomes a necessity, we can talk about what those requirements are. And there must be a quorum of the members physically at the location. At this time, they are also reviewing opportunities for the public to attend virtually or some, some, some mode of remote access. So right now, that remote access link is still provided on the webpage. That says they transition back to full in-person meetings. Okay? So at this time, we can start with review of the approval of the June 2, 2021 minutes. Does anybody have any notations, corrections, additions?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second it.
Tim motions, Karen seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes, what, 5-0-0?
Yep.
Okay, good, get that out of the, out of the way. First on the agenda is the continuation of the application from J&amp;R Realty Trust. Without going through all the information regarding that application, it is an open application. We have received a letter from Charlie Zilch, representative for the applicant, June 11, dated June 11, 2021. Says, "Dear Members of the Board, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue the public hearing for the above referenced site plan application to the next available Planning Board hearing. Thank you for your consideration." That is Tax Map 44, Lot 2, J&amp;R Realty Trust, Jeffrey E. Raymond trustee, 190 Plastow Road, Plastow, New Hampshire, 03865. So at this time, we will continue that application to our next meeting, which is July 21. One note, there will no, there will not be any abutter notices sent out for the continuation of that meeting. All right. That leads us to PB 21-07. The completeness of an application from Brighton Drive, Inc. for the consolidation of two parcels, a conditional use permit, and a 14-lot residential subdivision. The plan proposes to combine the parcel known as North Ave, Tax Map 47, Lot 003, reported to have approximately 43.39 acres and approximately 145.69 feet of frontage on North Ave, with the parcel known as 437 North Ave, Tax Map 36, Lot 018, reported to have approximately 2 acres and 0 feet of frontage on North Ave, both in the LDR zoning district. The plan further proposes a subdivision of the resulting parcel to include 14 single-family lots, fronting on two new public rights-of-way, Brady Circle at approximately 650 feet and Abbey Road at approximately 1,956 feet, with related drainage and utility improvements. The applicant is also requesting a conditional use permit for a wetlands crossing. The applicant is the property owner of record for both parcels. If the application is found to be complete, the Planning Board may immediately conduct the public hearing. All right, so we've received a staff report dated June 14. Our planning department, the applicant has submitted the required materials to allow the Planning Board to review the application. Would anybody like to send, put in a draft motion for the application acceptance? Go ahead, Karen.
I move to accept the two-lot consolidation, 14-lot subdivision, and conditional use permit. Application involving two parcels on North Ave, Tax Map 47, Lot 3, and Tax Map 36, Lot 12, complete.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Bill Coy, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Abstained? Motion passes, 5-0-0. Okay. At this time, we can allow the applicant or the applicant representative to speak about the project.
Is the mics?
Is it, I think it's that one.
I don't know whether that one's working or not.
Yeah, let's go with that one in.
I want them to get the red, the green light on. Good evening, I'm Tim Lavell from James Lavella Associates, representing Brighton Drive Incorporated. The parcels are on North Ave, right at the state line. It consists of, both of them together consist of 45.39 acres. We're proposing to construct two roadways, an Abbey Road and a Brady Circle, which would access 14 building lots. All lots would have onsite water and septic. Noticed in the staff report that said there weren't any, we're asking for two waivers, there weren't any copies of the waivers. They do have those here for your files. It's fairly straightforward, fee simple subdivision. We've gone through exhaustive review with Keach and Nordstrom. We have a few items to take care of there, and obviously, we've got a new staff report that we can take care of some of those items. We have all state permits, which includes state driveway permit, North Ave being a state road. Subdivision approval, dredge and fill approval, and alteration of terrain approval. So we've got all of those items. Again, as I stated, it's fairly straightforward, fee simple subdivision. Any questions?
Okay. I'll note that the two waivers weren't received prior to the meeting when, when our materials were passed out, so I don't believe we will consider the waivers this evening. At this time, you know, I'll make some notations about Keach Nordstrom's comments. There are a number of outstanding issues that need resolution. Some of those are procedural, some of those are, some points of, some things that need to be addressed. So it will be expected that there will be at least one more set of review comments from K&amp;A regarding the application. Outstanding issues. Applicants comment on K&amp;A and staff checklist review. Department of Building Safety and Concom review comment. Executed lot consolidation, two original forms. Formal waiver requests, we understand you have them now, so please submit those.
If you'd like, I'll get up and hand them to you now.
We can, I'd like them to also go to the staff so that we can, we can consider them through the formal process. And also, final review comments from K&amp;A. Thank you.
We've gone through this existing letter, made the corrections to the plans. That is not, obviously, what we're looking at because we didn't have time to get them to staff or anyone. So they're just waiting to be sent to Mr. Keach in case there are some corrections or things that need to change after tonight's meeting, and then we'll send them, obviously, to Keach and back down.
Sure.
To staff.
It's the recommendation that the hearing be continued to the July 21 so that some of these outstanding issues can be addressed in between. We can certainly have a public comment, excuse me, not comment, board comments, discussion about some of the other aspects of the plan. Does anybody have any outstanding questions or comments at this time? Tim, you're aware of the things that were brought up by Keach Nordstrom, correct?
Yes, in fact, I think we need to have a discussion about zoning matter, number one. Because that item is not going to go away on his letter until it's discussed with the board. And that's essentially what his matter says.
Okay, can you specify zoning matter number one? Okay. The upland areas being used to satisfy minimum lot size.
Yes.
Area must be contiguous.
Yep.
Okay.
We are proposing to fill portion of wetlands for water lines, which would put the wells on one side of the wet, the homes on the other. By this filling, we are making the lots contiguous soils. And that's just a question he asked. Do you feel that that satisfies the requirement? Our feeling is that it does, in the same way that we're proposing to construct roads to give these lots frontage. They don't have frontage yet, but we have to construct something to make them meet that requirement. We've received dredge and fill for those crossings, which would make all the soils contiguous. We met with the board, no, six months or maybe even longer ago in regards to this issue. They suggested we go to the zoning board and ask to have that particular zoning ordinance waived or a variance to it. They flatly denied that request. We then met with Conservation and went through their review for the CUP, which now, rather than just at the frontage doing a little filling, included these crossings. We got their blessing on that and the crossing at the front. And so we're back here in front of the board, and it is our contention that the lot will contain contiguous upland soils of over 110,000 square feet.
Okay. I think that certainly that's going to be a larger discussion between now and, and if we continue this hearing to the 21st. I know the board will look for the professional opinion and, and statement from Keach Nordstrom, so that's certainly going to be a continued discussion. Does anybody have any comments from the board at this time on that, that point? All right, so zoning matter number two also addresses the, talks about impacting 840 square feet of land situated within this overlay district. And also, as of March 9 of the current year, via town meeting, Article 4 of the zoning ordinance, establishing modified wetland buffer and setback values. There are some designations on wetlands impact, so I think that that's an important factor to, to address as well. Again, the planning design matters seem to be largely procedural. You know, adding words, adding designations on the plans. I think that's all going to be easily resolved, but.
Yeah, we addressed the new setbacks when we sent the plans in speaking to Mr. Keach about that particular note. Basically, they weren't very clear on the plans. There were just some lines that didn't really say what they were. So obviously, he asked us to kind of label them and make it a little clearer.
Sure.
Which we've done.
I'll ask the board again. Does anybody have any questions or commentary on any of the zoning matters as current that the applicant might be able to respond to? Mr. Cashel?
Yes, I just want to point out, Section 220, 34 dimensional requirements, subsection 3 in parentheses.
John, will you use your mic, please?
Oh, yeah. And this has to do with the minimum lot area. So it says here, "Upland areas being used to satisfy minimum lot size must be contiguous." So, you know, as, as Steve Keach is pointing out in his report to us, his most recent report, he does have questions in regard to certain lots on the plan not actually meeting that strict criteria. And Mr. Lavell is stating that they plan on making the land in these lots, these questionable lots, contiguous upland by the installation of, you know, water lines and creating an upland corridor to the other side of the wetlands from the lower part of each lot. And that requires a conditional use permit issued by this board. You know, and it's not a, a, an absolute that the board has to. It reads here in Section 220, 25, conditional uses. A conditional use permit may be granted by the Planning Board. And then it has the subcategories 1 through 5 and subsections B and C of those subsections. So there's a lot of language that the board should really consider in regard to the conditional use permit that the applicant is seeking. And what it has to do is, you know, what constitutes a minimum lot size on this subdivision plan? And does that minimum lot size, does it meet the criteria within the zoning ordinance? And, and then, it's not a shall grant a conditional use permit. It's a may issue. Reporting in her staff report, that would be a good idea for the applicant to consult with the Conservation Commission. And, you know, the board, I think the board, in accordance with what Dee has recommended here in her staff report, that the, we receive input from the Conservation Commission. So to allow them to have their review and for them to recommend to the board what they would like to see on this plan for it to meet, you know, the criteria of respecting the wetlands that are associated with the property.
Yeah, I think that, it's a good point, John. And obviously, with the Warren article, where we, the board and the townspeople reinforce the importance of wetlands, I don't think that's to be taken lightly. So with that in mind, it's important to address these issues. I know that the original application was a larger plan, or, excuse me, additional homes require variances and whatnot. I was not on the board at that time. But my understanding is that the Concom was spoken with at the time, but I don't know that you've gone back to the Concom since.
Concom looked at this plan. This is the original application. There was a plan brought in front of the board for discussion purposes that would have required variances for more lots. But this is the only plan we've brought forward.
There's been no such changes since that conversation? Because some of the notations I read address things like shared driveways and things. It seems like some of that has changed since the original application.
Shared driveways was a discussion that was quickly dismissed because of lot line setbacks. The plan that is in front of you tonight was looked at by Conservation. They should have sent a letter of recommendation. That's what they told us they would do. We'll certainly meet with them again and show them the plan again if that's what they, you would like us to do. We're not ignoring that, but I just need you to know that this is the plan they looked at. Have there been revisions as per Keach Nordstrom review? Certainly. It was not driveways that they saw, it was waterline. This very plan is what they saw.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Tried to avoid filling it, and that avenue was close to us. So we went to Conservation. Conservation made suggestions and spoke to DES, and we obtained the DES approval.
I think that the board would feel most comfortable with a current, up-to-date meeting with Concom. I'm seeing consensus through, through some nodding. I think that's an important aspect, and it sounds like that's doable for you. So I would recommend that. If there's other outstanding matters, that's certainly something that would, you know, address some of the concerns that the board may have, that the abutters may have. And certainly, we'd like to have a current response from them. So I would recommend that you reach out and get that set up as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just make one more point? Section 220, 25, in its subsection C, I just want to point this out to the Planning Board. The Planning Board, with the concurrence of the Conservation Commission, may require the applicant to submit an environmental impact assessment when necessary to evaluate an application made under this section. So that's, that's an area that Conservation Commission and the Planning Board may want to agree on, you know, if, if both boards believe that an environmental assessment is warranted.
Yes, Karen.
John, are we allowed to require a sidewalk? Can we do that ourselves?
It's a request that we can make to the applicant and the representatives, and if so, it would, it would function as a, a public meeting. The abutters would be notified and invited as well. So if the board feels that that is an important step to take and informative, I'd suggest that we schedule something. Do I, is that something?
Yes.
We, we would like that.
I think it makes sense so we can see it.
This is a 45-acre lot that we're trying to get 14 lots on, not 40.
Sure.
So it's much more appreciated when you're walking around and have to walk extensively rather than looking at a flat white piece of paper. So if that's what you would like, we'll set that up immediately.
Okay. How do we typically set that up? Tim, have you had experience with setting up the sidewalks?
Usually Dee would coordinate an acceptable date.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think we've also done it, you know, like, if people are amenable, no reason you couldn't do that tonight, right here. I mean, you don't have to go away and coordinate and come back. I mean, you can do it.
Yeah, I have to say, after reading this, I felt that it was an important request. I know that I talked to the boss, which is my wife, and she designated that I have one Saturday in August available. So either way, let's find a date that works, at least for a quorum of the board. So if anybody has any ideas, if you felt more comfortable, we could always push it back to Dee and schedule something. Yes, John?
Yeah, so if the board does schedule a particular date and time, you know, it's, it's just really a 24-hour posting of the meeting, you know, and that would be put on the town website.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody, I assume that we would look for a weekend date. Is that, is that most feasible for everyone? Perhaps like a 9:00 or 9:30 start time?
Afternoons is plenty of light until 9 o'clock at night, so.
Yeah, I would just suggest, and that's all I'm doing, but what usually comes to an advantage of the board in the summer months is to, say, commence the meeting, perhaps an hour before the regular meeting time to actually meet on the site. So say 5:30 the night that we're going to continue this to the next public hearing. And there is enough parking out there.
Certainly.
Take down the, the chain gate that's there. Everybody should be able to pull in off the road. And, you know, it's a pretty accessible site. It's, there's no steepness to it at all. And, you know, there's large sections of it that are pretty well cleared out.
So, John, you're suggesting that an option is to go July 21 at 5:30?
Meeting.
Ahead of, ahead of our scheduled meeting?
That's a good idea.
Physically meet there?
I think that's a good idea.
I don't, I don't think anybody really wants their weekends interrupted in the summer.
Yeah, that's good.
You mean, you don't, you don't want to do Planning Board things on Saturdays? So. So I will ask the board, does anybody have an objection to that?
I won't be here at that meeting. I was going to tell you that at a later date.
Okay, all right. Okay, is the applicant okay with that? 5:30 on July 21st?
Sure.
Okay. 5:30. And if there are any abutters, please make note. We will notice that. As John said, 24 hours in advance, but the public is available and encouraged to attend?
5:30, July 21st.
7:21, okay, duly noted. At this time, is there any other commentary from the applicant representative or the board before I open it up to the public?
Yeah, I have one. What, what sheets show the amount of area you're going to fill to get contiguous upland?
They are shown on sheet seven and nine as well as sheet 12, 13, and 15. 12, 13, and 15 are part of the roadway construction plans. Those give you a better idea of the grading and so forth.
All right, so what would you say is the best representation of the fill out of those pages?
Unfortunately, it takes three pages to show them. The best representation of the fill for one of the crossings, which would be between lots five and six, is on sheet 12. And the best representation for the other crossing is on sheet 15. And that's the crossing between lots three and, excuse me, eight and nine.
Okay, so on sheet 12, you've got map three, lot three dash five. You've got a wet area designated. And from five to six, you've got a line crossing, is that correct?
Correct. If you're looking on sheet 12, there's also a proposed stormwater management basin between the road and that crossing.
And the proposal is only to fill the area necessary for the line crossing?
Yep.
Is there an approximation of how much fill?
It's about 10 feet wide. The impact between five and six is 1,927 square feet. And the other crossing is 1,950 square feet.
Any other fill proposals?
The other fill is shown on sheet 12 also, and that's at the very beginning. There's kind of a drainage off the side of the road that has established itself as a wetland. And that is, I think, you had said it earlier, I'm not seeing it immediately. It's 840 square feet. And that's right at the entrance, there'd be a culvert. It would take all the water that's running down North Ave and let it continue on its way.
Tim, do you have any additional questions? I did notice that on sheet seven, it specified that there were 5.46 acres of wetlands. And again, the only proposal for fill are those two locations, is that correct?
Three locations.
Three locations.
1,927, 1,950, and 840. And as I stated before, we met with Conservation and went over that because they, it was required that they give comments to DES. We submitted to DES and obtained that, all, the approval for all three cross.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
I noticed there was the comment from Danny on the highway department, that he was questioning drainage on the new roads, off the new roads, too. This is his letter, I think.
Yeah, I think that highway was, had a question about
Yep.
the impact to the roadway with regard to drainage, especially if there's some, some land alteration. Do you have any feedback on that?
Whereas I just received those, is he questioning the impact to North Ave? Or is he questioning the drainage on the-
Just to the new roads.
Yeah, so I'm, that would, to me, would be Brady Circle and Abbey Road.
Right.
I guess I would have to know his question specifically because it's been reviewed by Mr. Keach and designed as per your rules. But we can work that out. And I will read his letter and address it directly with Dan. We don't see any issue with the way it is as designed.
Yeah, again, it's, you know, if we've got some outstanding questions that need to be addressed, we might as well put them out on, on the table, make sure that everybody's aware of what, what kind of information would be sought.
As for the new roadway impacting the existing North Ave, all the drainage from the new roadway is maintained on site. Nothing goes out into that culvert that will be going under our new road. That is just to not interrupt the existing drainage for North Ave. Again, this was also reviewed by DOT, whereas it's their road.
Yeah, this was impacting on the new roads, proposed new roads.
It's, it's designed per your regulations and so forth. I guess I would have to know from Danny his exact concerns. I wouldn't want to just give him a generic answer.
One of the other things that did come up, and we talked a little bit about it earlier, we understand that the shared driveways, you know, has basically been eliminated. However, there may be some issues with certain driveways being able to meet the 25-foot setback from side property lines.
No issues.
Okay, and will that be duly noted on, on any plan updates?
Yes, in fact, I did notice in the staff reviews that someone suggested a note be put on the plan in that, in that regard, so that I guess the people know they have to be 25 feet. And we have no issue with adding that note. Makes sense to us. But there's no need to run driveways within 25 feet.
Okay. Also, there's a dotted line shown on pages seven through 10. There's nothing in the legend to indicate the meaning of the dotted line. Sounds procedural, but if there's anything of note.
Yep. We will take care of it.
Do you know offhand what that denotes?
I do, now that I look at it, it's just a soil boundary.
Okay.
But it's apparently not in our legend.
There is no note found in the notes section that indicates if this property is located in the aquifer protection district. And if so, the level of transmissivity. Are you aware of the-
I am aware that it is definitely not in the aquifer protection district. As to the exact transmit word, I'm not going to be able to say.
I'm lucky, I got it out.
I would check it and put it on the plan.
And then you see the other ones, right? No, no, no with identification of the 100-year flood elevation line. So the plan should be reviewed and updated as needed to confirm compliance with PZO Article Four, Natural Resource Preservation. Again, this refers to the, the town meeting, which was voted on by the townspeople.
January.
Yep, January 2021, adopted on March 9th. So the notations on the plan refer to the former Article Four wetlands ordinance.
Yeah, the buffers for the new rule, which is up on your board there, are on the plans. They just were not clear.
Okay.
We have cleared those up. Again, I mentioned that we've already made most of Mr. Keach's comments, we've already made the revisions for them. We just didn't want to send them out and then have to send them something after coming here tonight.
And I'm going to ask the board from experience, is this something that we would invite CONCOM? I know that they could attend on their own, but would there be formal communication as such to attend the sidewalk?
Oh, if they wanted to, yeah. If you want to invite them.
Yeah, I think it would be fairly standard to invite them.
Okay. All right, any other commentary from anybody with the planning department or planning board at this time?
I think there wasn't anything else.
Any additional comments, Tim?
No.
At this time, I will open it up to public comment. Charlene, should, can we move that mic over to the folding table?
I can also get up and get out of the way.
I think that, you'll be fine if you don't, if you're okay. If anybody wishes to speak, please come up, state your name and your property address, and then feel free to address the board.
Hi, my name is Michael Scherr, 38, North Ave.
Which, what was the number?
38.
38, and can you spell the last name?
S-H-E-R-R.
All right, great.
Okay, so my first question is, how the town allowed these folks to destroy a natural habitat for deer and turkeys and other wildlife back there?
Is that-
It's my first question.
Okay.
Secondly, I'm curious how close the, you're going to be building to the current lot lines?
All right, I'll, any other question? I'll let the applicant respond to the lot line proximity.
The closest they could build is 25 feet to the current lot lines. I don't see that happening, other than there are a couple lots that would allow for that to happen. Normally, they're not going to want to push the structures way back on their lot to get close to the neighbors. They're going to want to be closer to the proposed roadways. As far as destroying the natural habitat, the property was logged. That's all we did, was for tree harvest. Trees now than there were 40 years ago. There were a lot more fields.
Tim, I'm going to defer to you with your experience. I know that's not really a question I can answer. Some of that activity was prior to my attending the board. I think that's really a question for building inspector and things like that, correct, John? Is that, is that your thoughts?
Well, you know, everybody should realize, in New Hampshire, the logging industry, they have their own set of statutes that allow them to tree harvest. And, you know, it's, it's a typical first step for a developer to do is to harvest the trees on a particular property. It, it seems intrusive and it seems like it's a, you know, a, you know, a step that shouldn't be taken before a planning board reviews a plan. But people have the right, in accordance with the statutes on forestry, to, to take down certain trees and, you know, have that type of work okayed by the state. But it's, it's, all I can say, it's typical tree harvesting, and then they'll come in with the plan. It's, 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 it's an adverse impact for everybody to see, but they have the statutory authority to do that.
Yeah, it just seems kind of opposite as what should actually happen.
And they have certain rights to actually go into the wetlands and do all the harvesting and driving through the wetlands and stuff like that, because this set of statutes are different than, you know, what a developer would have to go through.
Okay, well, that's water over the dam anyway.
Yeah, no, that's duly noted. I would love to respond in a more specific manner. I think that it goes beyond the board's purview for some of that, because, believe me, I've, I've seen it, I've dealt with it personally, and it's not a fun sight to see when you've enjoyed, you know, a portion of land for so many years and, and what comes with it. So with that in mind, you know, it becomes down to, I think what John's referring to is logging statutes and whatnot and what's allowable. I, I understand there was maybe some historical, you know, concerns about how that went down and, and some impact. I assume that there'll be no further issues as we look forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just, again, property was logged. What, what we do with large pieces of land.
Okay.
Trees go back pretty darn quick. And as I stated before, you know, when I was a young man, my parents' cars weren't all yellow all spring, because there weren't nearly as many trees. That's where your pollen's coming from. There were plenty of fields around here. I went to high school here in Plastow. There were a lot more fields, a lot less trees.
What sort of vegetated buffer, I know there's, do you foresee additional vegetated buffer beyond what's required in between your abutters?
Nope, it'll be, it'll be allowed to come back naturally. They didn't cut right up to the property line real extensively. They kind of, the middle of it is where they did most of the harvesting. They left, they left some trees, they left some buffers. And you'll see when we're walking the property, it's already starting to come back. It doesn't take very long.
Well, you'll also see how close they got to the property line when we take that walk.
All right, thank you, sir, for your- Sure.
Oh, I want to applaud the board for sticking to their views on the two acres. Last time I was here, they wanted to do one-acre lots because they were going to get water from Haverhill. Is that still the plan, or are they going to sink walls back there?
I'm going to defer again to, to Tim and the rest of the board, since I was not present at the prior meeting. Does anybody have any feedback on that? I assume that it was just part of the LDR requirement.
I can speak to that.
Sure.
We did come forward with a conceptual plan that actually, I think we wanted to reduce it to 50,000 square feet, which is just over an acre, not even two acres, with Haverhill water. There was possibly an opportunity to get Haverhill sewer as well. That didn't go anywhere, so we've come back with, it's actually more than two acres required. It's 110,000 square feet of upland. Two acres is 87,120. And that's what these lots have. So that was a conceptual plan that had never been brought forward with a great deal of design. Roadways weren't designed, it was just something that was brought up for discussion. We had to put a plan, a little sketch together to come to the board, and that's as far as it went, was a sketch. So this, this is the only design we've had.
Yeah, the application as is, is the current, current plan being considered. So what you see is-
Is a two, at least a two-acre lot.
My understanding is that, that's correct.
Two and a half.
Okay. And my last question would be, is there any possibility to ask, require, cajole these folks to put up some mature arbivites along the property lines? folks to put up some mature arbivites along the property lines? To kind of delete the impact of the neighbors and the abutters? And maybe hopefully, before they start construction, to dampen some of the construction and debris that'll be floating around the backyard over the course of this construction?
Tim, do you have any...
I didn't say mature arbivites or something like that, that's what I was asking for.
Tim, do you have some feedback on that?
I'm not sure we'd be willing to do that unless the neighbors were willing to do it in return.
Well, I don't understand that.
Yeah, I'm trying to...
You're asking for a buffer from the new homes, maybe the new homes need a buffer from the old homes.
I think, well, I can't speak for the applicant. I think because they had all the vegetation there, that's why I asked about, to what impact you were leaving the current vegetated buffer there.
I guess my point is simply, they had vegetation there, you'll notice it's coming back, but shouldn't there also be vegetation and buffer on the existing lots?
We didn't change our lots, you're the one that changed everything back there.
You, at some point, those lots were changed. Is this, we're going to close the barn door after the cow is out? You don't have to follow the same requirements that you're going to ask us to?
I haven't changed anything. I'm just living there for 30, will be 34 years in October.
Yeah, one thing I'll remind everybody is, you know, obviously...
And I don't mean to be adversarial, I'm sorry.
No, no, and I'm not saying that, I just want to make sure we don't get there. I think that, you know, the board acts upon the ordinances and other requirements within the legal, you know, our books. But if you've ever watched any of the meetings we've conducted, especially maybe this board's higher emphasis on landscaping, on commercial projects, we, we believe in, you know, appearance and aesthetics. You know, all I can say is, as a good neighbor, if that's a consideration, the board, you know, again, may not be a requirement by law, but if there's anything that would be included in that, you know, it sounds like the neighbors would appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr. Cashel.
One of the things everybody really has to take into consideration, you know, in the future, whatever configuration is approved, these are private properties, so the people that move into these, these houses, you know, they're going to be entitled to do whatever they want with their landscaping, you know, within the laws, just like everybody else. So, that's the trouble with, you know, you require somebody to put two shade trees in their front yard. Well, some people don't like trees in their front yard, and they take them out, and there's nothing that can really be done to restrict somebody from doing something on their private property. Within the right of way, that's our jurisdiction, but on private property, I don't think anybody in this country wants to be told that they can't do something that the law allows them to do.
Yeah, and great point, John. I think that at the end of the day, you know, neighbors are going to want to do what's good for their property and for the aesthetics surrounding them. So, it may provide an opportunity for you to do what you'd like to do on your own property, and maybe that helps with privacy and aesthetics. All right.
Can I bring up an anecdote?
Sure.
An analogy? It was involved in a five-lot subdivision in another town at one point. And everybody, nobody wants to see change, nobody wants to experience it, but it happens. In any event, in this one particular subdivision, everybody was up in arms, all the abutters. But once everybody realized, you know, the permitting process and the development was going forward, you know, there were a lot of trees that came down. Almost every square foot on the property had trees. Well, the abutters also had a lot of trees that they didn't particularly want on their properties. You know, a lot of these white pines become very dangerous once they, you know, reach that, you know, 100 feet in height, and, you know, first wind comes by and knocks them down or whatever, and hits houses and cars. So, at the end of the day, everybody was pretty happy because the developer actually took down quite a few trees that would not otherwise have come down, that people really wanted down on their properties. That's just an analogy of what can take place, you know, with development. I just had one the other day, this gentleman had three old pine trees, and there was a development beside him, and, you know, these are dangerous trees, and the developer took them down, didn't, didn't even break a sweat over it, just took them down for the guy. And, you know, he was an older gentleman, and, you know, see, so you can, there's a lot of working in between that can happen. There's some benefits that come with change, but, you know, it's just...
Yeah, from a board's standpoint, you know, we can only enforce, you know, some of the variant, some of the setbacks and things like that, and what's in the right of way, as John mentioned. Other than that, I would hope that the builder would, in good faith, look to enhance the aesthetics of the property that they're building, and that in conjunction would have a positive impact on the abutters. That's all I can really, you know, propose on that. Okay, any other...
I was just asking for the consideration of the developer.
All right, thank you, duly noted.
Having said that, I thank you for your time and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
George Barnes, B-A-R-N-E-S, 19 North Avenue, right up the street, five houses from where this is going on. And to let you board members know, they cut right up to the property lines and they slashed it. They destroyed the woodland. There's nothing left here. This guy's saying trees are growing back, there's shrubbery growing back. It's a mess, okay? If they're going to clean it up, who knows? But I'm letting you know, as a resident of over 20 years, okay, I've watched that property my whole life, okay, and it's a mess, okay? And I'm worried about traffic on the road, too. Ever since they put Walmart in, I got cars backing up to my house from 2:30 in the afternoon to 5:30 in the afternoon. And it's only 12 houses, but that's 30 more cars, okay? So, I'm worried about it. But just to let you board members know, come July, wear some long pants, because we're going to take a walk down there, and you can see how it's butchered, okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ross Davis, 32 North Avenue. I bought my house about a year and a half ago. Got a couple questions tonight. My well is close to the abbey, the proposed abbey road, and I just want guarantees that it won't be negatively impacted in the terms of quality of the water, nor the volume of water. There's a lot of water around my house to begin with, and my basement is constantly wet. Some pump working hard, but I just don't want that development to redirect water into my property. And I already have a stream running through my front yard that culverts underneath North Ave. It's already backed up, so the culvert's not going to be big enough, or it's not the correct, I don't know, it's not flowing right, so I think upstream, it's coming from the proposed development, and I just want that to take into consideration. But yes, going back to the tree cutting, it's right on the property. Just picking bushes and...
Okay. Tim, can you speak to the wells and some of the things that you guys are doing for water impact, water quality, things like that?
Yes, as I stated before, this is fully designed, meaning your rules, there is, in the case of Mr. Davis's property, there is a ditch line that will direct the water down towards North Ave and keep it from flowing towards him and his existing driveway. Will probably help the situation that he has. There's kind of a large, if you look at the plan, there's kind of a large flare at the entrance or...
Which page are you looking at?
Let's say Sheet 1, and Mr. Davis is just to the north of the entrance. It's kind of a large flare in the roadway, just because that's the existing frontage. And where, the roadway is designed more to the south, so there's, there's a good amount of area between the proposed roadway and where his lot line is, and they're creating a swell in there to direct the water towards North Ave. There's a catch basin designed there that will bring it across the new abbey road into a stormwater management basin, which will then in turn empty it into a culvert that goes underneath North Ave. So, any of the water from this development will be directed away from Mr. Davis's property. And I think it, the point right now, I think that naturally, some of it kind of goes towards his driveway and even his front yard, just the way it sits. So, I think it'll actually help. As far as the well quality, there's no need to blast, we've done extensive test pits out here along the roadway and in the lots, so they'll just bulldoze up some material, add their gravels and so forth.
How deep are the wells? You haven't, you haven't...
We haven't dug any wells yet. Just, you know, six or eight foot deep test pits, observation pits...
Sure.
...to look for water table and ledge, which is part of the process. As far as how deep are the wells, by the time I come back next meeting, I can tell you how deep the wells are in the area, because the State Well Board actually keeps fantastic records.
All right. Mr. Cashel, I'm going to ask, in some of the pre-planning meetings, did Steve address any of those types of questions with regard to the water and some of the things that they've done to abate any water issues? Do you have any commentary to add, or...
Well, the only commentary is that, you know, being out at the site at one point and walking it, it's barely level, you know, and you can see that in the road profiles and the plans, you know, the road averages barely 1%, which is incredibly unusual, you know? So, it's a level piece of land. There isn't a lot of, which, when developed, it doesn't create a situation where there's a flush of water associated with any storms, that it's just going to, you know, gain any real velocity. So, you're talking a sheet flow road, right? A small sheet flow road, and everything's just going to flow from the crown of the road, the middle of the road, onto either side. So, there isn't a lot of storm water associated with this particular type of property, which is pretty level, of that water going anywhere. And there's really no steep drop offs anywhere. It's the gullies and, you know, the drain, the natural drainage channels that concentrate heavy, fast volumes of water, you know, in steep terrain. That's where the flooding, you know, that's where you have a lot of natural flooding conditions. In this particular piece of land, it's so, it's so leveled in many respects that, you know, that sheet flow is, it shed off and it absorbs into the ground. If anything, terrain like this does allow for a lot of groundwater recharge. So, I don't know what these test pits resulted in. Mr. Lavell, what do you have, a groundwater table typically six to eight feet below grade, or...
No, no, that'd be not, not that good. I wish it was. The average is around three feet, which is typical for southern New Hampshire. Now, that's seasonal high water table, not necessarily groundwater table. We didn't find a great deal of water just due to the, the time of year we were doing the pits. But the seasonal high water table, which would hold the water up in a rain or storm event, ranged from 36 inches to 60.
I just wanted to comment, too. I mean, there's a lot of tree debris out on the property still, but you can see the enormity of some of these trees. So, you know, trees grow that large when they have a good supply of water, and there's some enormous trees that were cut down, you know? I'd say some of the biggest trees in New England that are so, that were associated with this property. And again, I just want to remark that state statutes allow them to log. If they didn't allow that to happen, in a property like this, there would be an assessment done of the associated timber, and you would try to design a subdivision around those trees to maintain them. You know, that, that would be, you know, a typical situation, but, you know, the lumbering industry is what it is, and they have their own statutes that they can follow. But some of these massive trees would, you typically, if you're designing a subdivision, really like them to stay.
Does that answer your questions? Do you have any other...
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure my well's not going to be impacted quality-wise and volume-wise. I don't, I don't assume volume-wise, so you know, there is a lot of water around there. But my other, my other question was, if you look back at that map...
Which I can't figure out how to pull it up there, so, sorry.
It says, Sheet 12 says saw cut existing driveway and remove portion to the south. When I bought my house, I was not informed that part of my existing driveway, which I'm assuming had been there for probably 100 years, built in 1900, I was not informed that that was on the developer's property. So, I just would like to request the town to not limit my options, because I'm in the process of hiring a surveyor and determining where my boundary lines actually fall. But on July 21st, you will see that, that's pretty much where you're going to park, is right next to where I'm talking about.
All right. Do you have any feedback?
We did a survey on it, we're very confident with what we have for perimeter. Maybe hiring another surveyor, I'm sure he'll come up with the same thing.
Is there any...
Unfortunately, if you didn't call him about two months ago, he's probably not going to be there real quick.
Well, that's all right. But is there any zoning boundaries for the proposed abbey road to my property boundary? Because in that proposed plan, it is right on the boundary.
Yeah, my understanding right now is that everything's within all the proper requirements, correct?
Correct. The roadway is typically about, the pavement of the roadway is typically about 13 feet from the edge of the right of way. As it comes by where your driveway is, that's the case. And then the further it goes towards North Ave, it is going further and further away from your property line. Unfortunately, as it comes around the corner out towards North Ave and where your driveway is encroaching on this property, there is a need to remove some of the driveway. Now, it is drawn right at the property line as to where it's to be saw cut, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the case, because eventually, Abbey Road will become a town road. And as you know, most people have pavement that extend out to the pavement within the town right of way. So, that's something that would be between the town and Mr. Davis. He could have a driveway entering onto Abbey Lane there if he so chose.
Yeah, John, do you have any feedback on that, or Tim?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, you know, between the two property owners. I mean, you're taking a good step in having your property surveyed, but, you know, there could be, you know, there could be something here to your advantage, actually, if you wanted to have a driveway on the new roadway, as opposed to having to go out on North Ave.
Would I have to, I would then have to change my address, correct? And that would be number, say, 2 Abbey Road.
That would be between you and the postal.
Yeah, you most likely could keep your address.
I would rather keep my existing driveway.
Yeah, I think, I feel like I've seen that in the past, you know? You have the address of the one road, but your driveway's technically on, you know, what appears to be a different road.
We could have a driveway on both.
Yeah.
Not sure why that's an approach so close to my boundary line there. I mean, look how much room is on the south... I mean, look how much room is on the south side.
Are you right on the Haverhill line there with the, on the right of way? No, I'm sorry, I was asking the applicant. Is the, from what I can see on the, on the plan, you're right on the property line? Just as you come over, you turn in?
Yeah, we're right. And what we did, as you know, normally when we design a roadway, we've, we put a flared end as it approaches the roadway. And we started, started our flare end right at the Haverhill Plaston Line, at the edge of the right of way of North Ave, and then went in from there. And we couldn't angle that road any further away from Mr. Davis by the rules of the state of New Hampshire and the angle in which they want a road to enter and exit from their town road.
Yeah, and what I would say is that the board, you know, our primary objective on plans is to make sure that the ordinances, the state regulations are followed as written. And so as John mentioned, it does sound like it'd be a good idea to have your own land surveyed. It sounds like it's unfortunate that there may be some sort of impact, but there may be an opportunity in the big picture. So, John, who would he reach out to when it comes to that? Is that Mr. Blanchett? That kind of a conversation?
Yeah, but Mr. Lavelle, I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, you know, you do have to maintain a 50-foot width right of way. How far does that widen out? It looks like it widens out pretty significantly. And I'm wondering if you, if the owner, the owner may want to entertain maintaining a 50-foot right of way all the way out to North Avenue. And in doing so, you know, taking into consideration that this particular butter, you know, I want to make sure, we're talking about the house on the left?
Correct.
Yeah. So, Mr. Lavelle, I mean, you know what I'm talking about.
I do. You're saying to parallel the proposed pavement, thus creating a kind of a triangle that would be annexed to Mr. Davis's property?
Right. Well, I'm just saying, it's just really going to be no man's land. It's part of this wide right of way that's.
Absolutely will be no man's land.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. But, you know, I mean, if you want to try to square things away, you know, just maintain the 50-foot right of way, you know, because you're building a public way. So that becomes the responsibility of the town to maintain extra width of the right of way that we're not interested in. You know, we want to stay, the town wants to stay within their jurisdiction, which is the typical 50 feet. So, I mean, this, you know, I don't, I'm not in the middle, I don't want to broker a deal, but, you know, this is something you two gentlemen might want to discuss.
I understand and I will run it by my client.
Yeah, I think it would be a very logical thing for both parties to consider.
What is the road width at, at North Ave?
Which is about 45 feet further than it normally is.
Okay.
Because even though it's a 50-foot right of way, when it flares, you're gaining 25 on either side.
Yep. So John, was your proposal to keep it at 50 all the way out to North Ave?
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, it's like a cul-de-sac. At the end of a cul-de-sac, if a cul-de-sac is continued into further developed land in the back that's undeveloped. So what you're supposed to do with that cul-de-sac is return the bulb areas, the wings of the cul-de-sac. You're supposed to return those to the property owner so that you only maintain a 50-foot right of way. You get rid of the turnaround unless there's some emergency purpose for it, such as, you know, a 2,000-foot long cul-de-sac being extended another 2,000 feet. You know, it may make sense to have a turnaround area halfway through, you know, and this particularly is, we're not talking about it, they have this wide area that they just don't have any use for. And I think it would really lend itself to, you know, maintaining that 50-foot right of way and the butter, you know, just having, being able to maintain or acquire integrity of his property post-development wise. And you know what? If you're really planning this thing, to have a driveway off of the new roadway, it does create a safer roadway, travel lane for that particular property rather than having, you know, a driveway right beside a roadway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so you do want to try to eliminate curb cuts whenever possible, especially on busy roads like this. So, I mean, I would strongly suggest to this board to advance that idea to the developer to, you know, consider allowing for a new driveway for this butter on this street and therefore get rid of his existing driveway, for instance. You know, you'd have a much safer.
With all due respect, I would, I would much rather mature up a Vitae's along the border than a, a new driveway.
Yeah, see, I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to read what you want or anything.
What I was going to say, John, is the state of New Hampshire asked us the very same question. And we corresponded with Mr. Davis, who informed us he wanted to keep his existing driveway, which obviously has every right to do. So we've left that alone. Does he have the opportunity, once this is a public right of way, to put a driveway onto Abbey Lane? Talk to DPW, get a driveway permit and do it? So he kind of has the best of both worlds. He does not wish to, and I hope I'm not putting words in his mouth, but he doesn't wish to abandon the existing driveway. The opportunity is always there for him to have the driveway on Abbey Lane.
I think that this will be, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I have a question because, and everybody will see it out there, the physical layout of this abutting driveway and the entrance way to this land. Was that a shared driveway? Access purpose is into this?
I believe I own the driveway and the easement is through my driveway as of now.
Okay, yep. Yeah, because you do, once you go in your driveway.
You have to take a hard right to get to the chain link.
Yeah.
I think this is an important thing to really get an understanding of on the sidewalk.
Yep.
Because in all due respect to, to Mr. Davis, I also want to understand what impact it will have to the town relative to his property and the applicant's property. So if we're maintaining those roads, you know, snow removal, you know, anything else that comes with what the town is responsible for, we want to have an understanding how it's going to impact, what it's going to look like when this thing is built. So let's make a mental note to really have a, a good understanding of what's going to happen there. Do you have a question, Lori?
No.
Are you just waving at me?
I guess I was. Hi, Tom.
Okay, does that, does that help? And certainly you're welcome to join us on the 21st.
I look forward to the.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions or commentary from any other members of the public? Okay. At this time, I would, per the recommendation of the staff and others, I'd recommend, I think we already have an understanding that we're going to continue this hearing to the 21st, which to include a sidewalk at 5:30 PM. Do we have to vote? We don't have to vote on that.
Well, I mean, sidewalk, the sidewalk is a separate issue. So that's a different meeting, if you will, that needs to be posted. You want to continue this public hearing?
Yes.
The July 21st at 6:30.
Yes.
That's the normal meeting time for the.
Okay. So we have a meeting for the sidewalk at 5:30 and the continuance of this application to 6:30 on the 21st.
The only question I would have was if we had the sidewalk at 5:30, does that give us enough time and then to come back? Would it make sense maybe to bump it to 5:00?
Probably.
I would agree with Bill.
Yeah, if we're sitting there 40, 40 minutes in and we're all saying, let's get off this property, we got to get to the town hall.
You got to walk back out.
Did anybody have a conflict with that?
No, that's fine.
No, 5:00, that's all right, I guess.
I just have one more comment. For the next meeting, Mr. Lavelle, will you be able to give a visual presentation of the plans so that everybody can see it, especially those people that are watching at home?
With your assistance, yes.
Okay.
I just couldn't figure out how to get it up there, John.
I mean, it, it probably didn't make total sense to do it tonight anyway, but for the next meeting.
Next night it will.
Sure. Yeah, we really want to get into a lot of visualization, especially coming off the site inspection. We'll probably want to see everything up there and compare what we saw and, you know, identify this wetland and, you know, the condition of the road and the, the shared driveway situation.
Sure. No, that makes sense. So we'll, we'll, I'll ask Dee to coordinate with Dean and Frank so that, I assume that's your laptop right there, make sure we have a hookup for you.
Yeah, this is your stuff, your.
That's ours?
I don't know how to do it. I'm, for someone who sits at a computer all day, I'm fairly computer illiterate.
We'll be, we'll be set up for it though.
Okay, good. All right. Sounds good. I have the waivers. Tim, would you recommend that we just hold off on these so that they're provided to the board or would you have read them?
No, I think, I'd hold off.
Yeah.
The only, is there one that you think might be controversial? That would be the only.
I think there's one that isn't spoken to in Mr. Keach's letter, and that was the waiver for lighting, roadway lighting.
Okay.
And basically with the new dark sky compliant, which is being drilled into our heads, do we want to have lamps and light up this roadway like it was made, you know, Route 125? Or do you not want to? So that's, that's something, yeah, that would be very good to discuss with the board tonight so that we can have it answered either way next meeting.
Tim, you gave me.
Did I give you?
Copies of the same one, it looks like.
Of course I did.
This one is regarding the culvert. While we will not vote on this waiver this evening, if the board's okay, I can read it and we can have discussion about it so that when the waiver is formally submitted, we'll have some discussion around it. Dear board members, please consider this letter a formal request to waiver subdivision regulation section 235 dash 32K requiring a street lighting. Being aware of the new dark sky regulations, we feel the installation of street lamps would be contrary to this regulation. So you're asking to put zeros lighting in?
Zero, zero lighting. I guess we're really just looking for input from the board. If you read the rules, I think it requires four or five street lamps to be put in. There's underground power, so you're not just bolting it to a utility pole. It would have to be lamps. I drove throughout town trying to see if there was a common lamp type or, there isn't. They're all different. There's subdivisions that they're supposed to be in that they're not. There's really big lamps on, I'm going to forget it, the one just on the right just before 125 as you head north on 128 here. And like I said, there are other subdivisions, they're just not there. So looking for just some guidance from the board as to what you would like. We haven't dug our heels in, we're saying we don't want to do it. It's just.
Sure. Mr. Cashel?
This is definitely an interesting subject matter. Looking at the proposed roadway, you know, you are designing it, it's a sheet flow. There's no sidewalks that I can see on the plans. So it is a country style roadway. Yeah. A completely dark road, no lights, you know, because today the LED, they're not, they're all energy efficient, you know, and the light is cast down. I just can't imagine, you know, such a long roadway with no lighting.
You don't have any of those.
You know, but this is something we should really think about and look towards. The other thing, a lot of communities don't want streetlights because they have to pay for that, that electric bill. So it does add to the cost, but it's such an interesting subject. It's worthy of doing research and, you know, forming an opinion of and, you know, fleshing through some of the fun facts and ball with it. Because, you know, it, it isn't a big cost like it used to be.
Yeah.
And you'll never get a chance to have lighting installed at the cost of the developer as opposed to the town when the people move in and want lighting, you know, and the town's looking to install it and, you know, brokering a deal with the, the electric power company. You know, now's the time to decide this when it's being built and it's at the cost of the developer as opposed to the town.
Sure.
And that's exactly what we're looking for. It's not that we don't want to do it, we just don't want to bring forth a design that's overdoing it.
Sure. No, I think, I think that light pollution is certainly something the neighbors would want to minimize. Yes, Max?
There was a subcommittee on the Energy Committee when I was on there, the street light, we were turning everything over to LEDs, and I think there were several town maps showing where lights were. So maybe we could get a copy of that from Dee and see what the average is and figure that out.
Yeah, I know where I live, we have old style lamps. They're aesthetically pleasing. One was out for a while outside my house and when I went back on, I couldn't sleep for a week. But, but it's not that bright and it's, again, it's, it's, so, yeah, good conversation. I think we'll, we'll have some thoughts around that for our next meeting. Okay.
I was, I was hoping to drive around and see kind of a common thread and then we were going to throw that on our plan.
Okay.
We don't have any on Mar Street. None.
Yeah, well.
Do you find that likable or no?
It's very likable and anybody that's moved in has not complained.
Well, just, I'm going to find out what your number is and then make sure you lock your doors tonight.
Doesn't mean she doesn't have lights on her house.
Exactly. It's personal. Everybody has their own. Yep.
With regard to the street light replacement that Max and just mentioned, the town did replace 450 something or other streetlights with a standard 3,000 K LED and a fixture, full cutoff lighting. So you don't get, just like we require for site plans, the light is directed down. And so that is, that replacement was standard, but what we didn't replace where there were, if there were existing antique fixtures or certainly private fixtures. So if you just, depending on where you drive through in town, you'd think, at least everybody's got their own kind of street lighting. It's because there are places where, you know, there are some differences.
Yeah, if you go down Greenfield, you'll notice that's actually the community's lights and they're the old style lamps, not maintained by the town.
Yeah, so the, the, I think the, and I think the subdivision regulations require a street light at street intersections.
Okay.
I think that's the requirement. Don't butt. We haven't, haven't done this enough lately.
It's not a great deal of lights that would be required when we read the rules. Like I said, if, if they're required, so be it. And like I said, if they're required, so be it, that's what we'll do.
So, the question is, on Abbey Road and North Ave, where's the closest streetlight to that intersection?
Is there an existing streetlight already near that intersection?
Just something to...
It very well could be one.
To look at.
Across the street, but I cannot answer that with any degree of accuracy right now.
Yeah, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't require a new streetlight, you know, if there's another existing light close by. And the other, you know, and then the intersection of Abbey and Brady, I don't know, that's, that's fairly close. So I don't know, I mean, maybe some of those things you might be able to...
Depending on where the existing one is.
Get a, yeah, get a feel, a better feel for sidewalk.
Okay, that sounds good.
But, you know, on a rainy cloudy night, can you safely see where the, you know, where the road intersection is? That's the, that's the concern. That's, that's all I have.
All right, good, yeah, no, that's something I think we can get a good visual at our sidewalk and then discuss further. And then, just for posterity purposes, I'll read what the other waiver request is, again, it's not, we're not voting on this this evening. Please consider this letter a formal request to waiver subdivision regulation section 235-33.B requiring 24 inches of cover over a drainage culvert. We are requesting 18 inches of cover with a culvert designed specifically for less than 24 inches of cover. Since conditions, my read is on, site conditions create a need for this waiver. Okay, we can discuss that further if there's any questions this evening, please.
Mr. Keach did recommend allowing that, that's in his report.
Okay. Duly noted. All right, any other comments from the board? Planning staff?
Five o'clock as opposed to 5:30.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock now, July 21st.
Public, any additional public comment? Thank you for attending, and any public comment, we appreciate it, and it's on the record. All right, continue to the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll continue our meeting. I'd ask members of the public, yeah, if you have discussion, you're free to have it, just help outside the door, thank you. All right, old business. Does anybody have some, any commentary on old business? Just picking up where we left off with our... Sorry, the...
CIP.
CIP or whatever the word is.
Oh, CIP, yeah, the, the first monthly meeting, can't get it out of my...
Workshop?
The workshop meeting, thanks, Max.
There we go.
We do have, we have voted to not have our July meeting correct?
Yes, yep, correct.
And when do we want to make the determination about August? Do we want to make that determination on the 21st?
I'd like to mention right now, if we get both of these on July 21st now, say we get JR here, and we have these, I do not suggest two on the same night. There is no way we're gonna be able to handle both of those in the time.
What, what's that, 190?
That would be the 21st, say JR wants to do it on the 21st now.
Yeah.
Now, we've got two of them that both needed good attention, and I just do not want to see them both on the same night.
Did we continue that, though, already date-specific?
I don't, that's what I'm asking.
JR Realty Trust, I mean, I specified that we would, do we need to, you know, is that set in stone now because it was mentioned?
I would say it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought.
But you know what, though? What we can take into consideration, whichever, whichever one we take first, if it really gets late in the night, all we have to do is continue date-specific to an additional date.
Sure.
We're not locked in to stay here all night, you know, wrestling with something, and it just gets out of hand, so...
No, I agree, we lose, we all start losing our wits. What's a good cutoff time, have you guys sort of proposed that in the past when...
We had it, a time now, it's nine o'clock, right?
We usually like to talk about it around nine and decide whether we want to continue or not.
Yeah, if we're not in the middle of a public hearing, you know, like, we started at eight, it's going on and on. You know, we could cut things off at nine if that's what we want to do.
Exactly.
Well, the tough thing is... But that would be it, we're starting at five on that date.
I know, it's a long, it's a long night.
That's a good point, and I apologize for, well, some of these things happened after other things, but...
Well, the applicant asked for this extension, correct, that's what that piece of paper was, so is there a chance that they might ask for another extension?
Yeah.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, they haven't budged yet.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
What we've requested, so...
It's gonna be different.
They might ask for more time.
Yep, I'm hoping.
But, but again, it's our, it's our planning board meeting.
Right.
So whatever we're up to, be able to do.
Well, I'm guessing that, you know, we hit on that date because we're physically on a location, then here, and then here, and two, two applications. You know, we're, we may start losing our wits at eight or so, 8:30, so we can have, you know, we'll see how it's going, and I'll ask the board how we feel at a certain point.
Because, you know, again, if we do have that first meeting in August, and, you know, we'll have workshop items if we do have that meeting, maybe we can give that on that, but it would still have to be continued date-specific from the 21st August meeting, so...
I think that's a lot.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave the determination about the first week of August up to discussion at our next meeting, which is July 21st at this point, so enjoy the month off. And to be discussed is the possibility that we could continue an application to that meeting, if we felt that that made sense, or if we want to, you know, get back on the workshop front. The only thing I think about with the workshop front is we're in August and time's flying, and, at that point, and if we really want to push to accomplish some things outside of hearing applications and, and just general discussion about things, if we want to work on warrant articles or anything else that, that we really need, you know, that are timed, especially a warrant article.
Yep.
It's time-specific.
Has to be done.
And I guess I'd put it out there at this point in time, does anybody, is anybody crafting anything in their heads that, that they think that they want the board to look at, consider, and then potentially work on?
I got a question for Tim. Tim, has the legislature been busy this year with new legislation pertaining to land use development or...
I don't, I don't think there's any, no, certainly no major changes. And I don't think, I don't remember any that would really apply to us.
And they were kind of quiet this year on that.
Yeah, I mean, the one that's kind of hanging around is this tiny house business.
Yes, the tiny house, yep.
And the tiny house is defined as, has to be at least 350 square feet, which is, you know, I mean, a good-sized St. Bernard fills that space, so...
Exactly.
And, and the problem is, legislation is pointing in directions that say you can prohibit them. So, my comment at various conferences has been, it's not the, it's not the tiny houses, it's the tiny lot.
What goes wrong with the tiny house?
You know, you know, they want to cram them in, like you would a trailer park.
Exactly, it would be a trailer park.
And, which, those also, you cannot prohibit, but you can put restrictions around them, so they're still, you know, reasonable, reasonable places.
I have a question about that, if you had like eight acres, an eight-acre property, could you put your own tiny home out there, or would we need an ordinance to allow that in the town?
No, as long as, I mean, you can put any residential structure.
Any residential.
Like a cheese shed or something out in the woods.
Yeah.
So right now, a tiny house is gonna be treated like a 2,000-square-foot house?
Yeah.
It has to follow the same rules?
It's one dwelling.
You're saying that there could be legislation that allows for...
More than one.
Tiny house parks, and...
Yeah.
Should we put some definitions around what constitutes a tiny house and get ahead of it? I mean, I don't know, I mean, do we, do we want to...
Well, I don't, I mean, I think the...
I don't think we should do anything.
Tiny houses sprinkled across the...
I mean, let the...
C3.
You know, I don't think we need to define what a tiny house is, we might want to work, get a heads-up on where and how they might be permitted.
Yeah, because they could pass legislation like they did with the accessory living units, you know, leaving little choice for communities to, you know, wrangle their own language. So, and that seems to be the way they go. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna allow this, whether you like it or not, kind of thing, so it would be hard, so we have to wait to see what they come up with.
What they do, yeah.
Yeah, because some people view it as sustainable, green, and then also a solution to sort of the housing shortage, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think Bill's gonna live in a tiny home anytime soon.
I would have a difficult time.
You always figure I'm gonna be in one of those tiny little houses later on in my life, forever, I'm not going in one now.
I'd be on one of my feet and be out the window.
I think the only thing I can think of is if I found a tiny house, like, as an acceptable and enjoyable option, life would probably be a lot easier for me. Somehow, if that's acceptable to me, life would be simple.
I'd rather have that for a choice than going to a home, so when I get to that point, I'll build my little tiny house.
They should call them Ls, too, I think.
The elderly.
That's another word for it, Ls.
Well, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the pressure from tiny house demand has been the inclusion of ADUs. Because, you know, now you can, everybody can put ADUs everywhere.
Remind me, ADU?
Oh, accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, okay.
It's accessory, that's all it is.
So that, you know, at least for families and neighbors, that, that took a lot of pressure off, and...
That was a, that was a really bold statute that was passed, it was amazing, you know, and I, I keep on pushing, or was pushing that down there, and they finally adopted it. You know, because it really was the most bold housing legislation in the country that was passed, and it was pretty amazing to watch. That was Ben Frost, who was the, you know, main proponent, and, you know, to get everybody on board and to sign it. Hey, if you want to try to control the price of housing or get it down to a reasonable cost, you produce more housing, and, you know, especially housing like that, because it's usually a family member more often than not, you know, and, you know, we all end up having family members that need housing. Either they're, either young, like the kids keep coming back, or, you know, we get old and they take over the main house and...
Yeah.
Small house.
Yep.
You know, the other, the other side of that coin that I've had some discussion with is, you know, New Hampshire certainly has a housing shortage. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. The disagreement comes in is, because we have such a low minimum wage, we're, we're wanting developers to develop cheap houses to meet the minimum wage, why aren't we beating the band to get better-paying jobs so people can afford a normal-sized house? And there seems to be that, I don't know, I don't see a hell of a lot of incentive from New Hampshire to do those kinds of things. And it might only be because I attend mostly planning meetings, and, you know, once you attend all these planning conferences, you get kind of this group-think mentality that, that sets in, and you don't get a outside opinion, but...
With the cost of materials now...
Oh, and that's really gonna come up soon.
I don't need, you know, 10 rooms, I just need, you know, five rooms and...
I couldn't believe it, the other day, I drove into McDonald's, their advertising helped for $17 an hour at McDonald's.
At the Haverhill?
At the Haverhill.
Yeah.
Yep, just to get them.
Now, you know, I'm sure if you go 40 miles north of here...
You won't get that.
You won't get $17, but...
They still can't get the help.
I know.
No, that's what I can't, I do not understand that.
I was in a Burger King the other day, there was only one person working.
Yeah.
The poor person was...
The Plastow Bank of America's been closed.
Yeah, when's that ever opening up?
I don't think they have the staff.
God.
And, you know, I, I think that as a bordering town, the wage gap is, is a little less. You know, New Hampshire has to sort of compete with the, the openings en masse, because a kid could just jump over the border and get a job at McDonald's for 17 bucks versus Red Shoe Barn for seven, you know, what are you gonna do, so...
My kids work there.
But, yeah, and so, Tim, are you suggesting that there's more emphasis on things like workforce housing and things?
There, there is, constant pressure to, to provide, yeah, a larger supply of inexpensive housing.
Yeah, but I think it comes sort of with the NIMBY attitude of, yeah, I'm all for it, but I don't want it in my backyard, you know, sort of thing. But I think that we open up that door by saying that, you know, the overlay district would allow for apartments and mixed-use...
A good mixture.
Structures, I'd love to see something go in, you know, that had that sort of model.
Nice.
Do we have the industry here that, like, you know, what kind of jobs are we gonna have that can support a workforce like that?
Well, you have everybody, a lot of people work in Boston, and they live right here.
Yeah, I mean, there was an open house in my neighborhood, there was 30 cars in like two hours, and 90% of them had mask plates. They're, they all found a much affordable, much more affordable home here than they were finding in Wilmington or...
Yeah, I mean, I worked out in Burlington.
There you go, there's another one.
There's a huge exodus, everybody knows this, out of the cities now, because the cities have become so unsafe. They've driven up the price of housing in Maine, all, you know, Idaho is out there this past spring.
Oh, I know, that's unusual, Idaho.
And the Californians moving there because they're driving up the price of housing.
Yep. Well, that's how we ended up in Plastow 17 years ago. We, I grew up in Burlington, and we came back during, I don't know what it was, 2005, when prices were pretty high at that point. And you couldn't find anything under half a million dollars in where I used to live, so it was like, forget that. So, we ended up here, great, you know, we're happy about it, but we don't want any more people from Mass.
A lot of it, too, is, a lot of people are switching to work-from-home models, I work in publishing, and that's a huge thing that they're facing, so a lot of people who lived in New York City are leaving by, they want property because they have to be home all the time for work, so that's where we are.
But you have the cities, too, like New York City, there's like six different taxes you have to pay to live in that city.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what it is, that's why they get...
I lived in New Jersey, my parents worked in New York City.
My daughter works at Columbia University in the engineering department, and she's been virtual at home for most of this time. And she wanted to put her notice in, and then, no, 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 you can stay home and work, definitely.
So, kind of rolling that conversation back in, because I know we've been kind of going for a couple hours almost, that in theory makes Plastow a very attractive location, it's why we live here, because I travel to... It's why we live here, because I travel to Boston for work, but you go to Burlington, you can jump on 495. I mean, traffic's not fun, but accessible and reasonable. So, you know, we know what 125 has become, we know that there's, they're going to carve out some additional residential areas. I'm not sure how much more residential land we have, I'm sure you guys know better than I do. But, you know, one of the things that I keep thinking about, talking about, what are the things we want to work on as a board, is, and some recent applications that maybe we suggested they look at, the aesthetics of the building and things like that. I don't know if we can work something out, if you guys have interest in that, and if we can set some, some higher standards, so that, you know, the town isn't just a hodgepodge of various looking, you know, not so attractive structures.
I think that's a good idea. If we are going that commercial route, I mean, people are here because we like living away from the city. We don't want to look like a city, so having higher requirements to make it look more, you know, aesthetically pleasing is definitely the way to go.
Yep.
And I would probably, John, I'd probably reach out to you and Tim. I mean, you guys have a wealth of experience and probably understand what you can and can't do as a, as a board, as a drafting, a warrant article, and what, what you're allowed to sort of require and what you can't, in terms of those types of things, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's federal regulations that were just recently passed, too, where multifamily, if somebody wanted to come in with a multifamily development, they can kind of plant those things wherever they want to now. You know, the previous couple of years, that wasn't the case.
Wasn't allowed.
Couple administrations before that, it was the case, so it's back, goes back and forth. So it, it's really a hard thing to control, except a lot of people, you know, in this country, don't particularly like cold weather. In New England, when you look at the map, New England looks so close to, you know, Greenland and Labrador, you know? It scares people, but, you know, a lot of people just want to be in the warm climates. I've had so many weird experiences traveling out west, and, New England, where's that? They know where Boston is, but they don't know
Don't tell them.
Yeah, they don't know where New Hampshire is. They really can't see it on the map. Their states are like this, you know, we're tucked up here.
But I think the reality is, you know, with, in my neighborhood, I would say that as, as houses open, the last few have gone, probably three out of the last four have gone to someone from Mass.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that's the reality.
The percentage of people that live in this state that are originally from there, it's over 50%.
Yeah.
We call them transplants.
Yes, right.
Worse than that, I know.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's the G-rated version.
Amazingly, the New Hampshire's population didn't change very much
Yeah, I know, I was surprised with that.
From 2010, we're still 1.3 million.
You know, the one thing that, you know, is, is a constant now, unlike when older people like myself, him growing up, everybody had five, six, seven, eight kids in their family, that doesn't happen anymore, you know? And in each household now, single-family household in most of New England is only producing .6, and it's actually less, kids per school.
You got to have them.
You know, so, you know, you don't have these huge demands for, you know, new house, new schools to be built. They're tearing down old ones and building new ones, and, you know, that's the in vogue thing to do, but, you know, back in the 60s, they had to build new schools every year to accommodate the growth that was going on. And then, you know, that's pretty much abated now.
Yeah.
But, you know, the town that, my hometown, they're building 3,500 apartments in, in that town right now. 3,500, I mean, it's just incredible.
Isn't that mine alone?
But, you know, it, it is, there is a growing population, that 128 belt in Boston, no one sees, no one has ever seen as many cranes in Boston.
Oh, my God.
Skyscrapers.
My daughter lives there.
Mostly those are apartment houses.
Oh, my God, it's horrible.
condos being built, but, I mean, there's dozens of them.
Yeah, we'll see how, you know, the lasting impact of what COVID did to drive people out will, I assume there'll be some suppression on some of that, but until prices come back down and moving back into the city.
Oh, they won't be left in the dust.
Yeah.
Cities are only attractive if they're safe. If, if people perceive them as not being safe to live in, you go to parts unknown, you know, that's where they, they, they come to New Hampshire, they come, you know, because you have to be safe wherever you live. That's, I think that's one of the most important things in anyone's life. You know, you want to be able to go down and walk down the street, bring your dog out for a walk or whatever, and feel like you're going to be able to get home safely. You know, and if that's not the case in the cities, you know, then you have the outward migration.
Well, in the interest of time, because I know, I know it's, we're pushing on two hours, you know, other old business, has there been any change with regard to the Rockham Planning Commission, RPC, and towns?
There hasn't at this point.
Okay.
But I'm still trying to get it on the agenda, we've had a few other things pop up.
You've been busy. We'll let it slide.
Exactly.
And I guess I will ask a selectmen's representative, was the property on Canterbury Forest?
That didn't come up.
Did that come up for discussion, whether or not the town wanted to sell that?
That's, that's been tabled not to be sold.
Yep, good.
Rose Ave is going to be Friday.
Right, it's Friday this week, the auction.
Oh, okay.
Let's hope there's lots of bidders.
But let's hope it goes like all the other price wars that are going on.
I know, seriously. What, just out of curiosity, the funds that come in from that sale, what does that go to the general fund, or?
Yeah, as far as I know, it goes to the general.
That's where it's chiving on.
Any, on the new business side, we've got, you know, a few things ahead of us, so I think we just discuss kind of what our thoughts are around the next two months.
I just had a quick question, and I don't know if this is the right form for it. When there's a new development being put in, or water, or work being done on properties, who, is that something we oversee, or the planning department? If someone's having an issue, if a resident's having an issue, who do they contact when those kind of developments are happening?
If, if somebody's doing, what is it?
Like if that new development that's coming in and it's causing flooding, who does the resident call?
So if we approve, if we approve, say, this division that we entertain this evening, and post-development, there's flooding conditions that originate, or supposedly originate
Or even during the development process.
See, I mean, that issue comes up a lot. You know, it's like blasting, you know, blasting, you know, if, you know, if you have a ledgy environment, it's going to be developed, it's going to be blasting.
The cheaper wells.
That comes under the state fire marshal, and they do house assessments, pre and post, and, you know, if you do have any fractures within your foundation that result from the blasting and everything else, as long as it's documented and you can prove that that was the case, then your insurance will cover it, or you, you know, may go after, or have to go after the developer's insurance, but that's one way to deal with that. Flooding, I would say with certain amount of dense development, you know, in a concentrated area, could cause the groundwater to rise, but, you know, we're talking about one house on a two and a half acre site. The dispersment of groundwater from one house on that size property affecting anybody? Really nil. In this particular property, what we have to, so you understand this, when we're really looking at the contours, and we can even have Steve Keach cite this, and, and what the, the water will do, the sheet flow water will do on this particular property.
They can predict it?
Oh, yeah, no, because you have natural drainage channels, and as I was saying before, there's no steep terrain, so this, this water doesn't travel fast, you know, furiously anywhere, because water needs grade, it needs steepness to get going. Otherwise, it just, it flows and it settles and goes into the ground.
So it's going to find some low points, some puddles, some pooling areas, and then settle into?
I guess my question is just like the protocol, if a resident has an issue, where do they go? Who do they contact?
Yeah, so, so if someone right now is having the water pipe put in, and then, you know, whoever, you know, the town comes back in and paves over it, now they're getting all this water coming in from, from that situation, I think, would that go to the Peter Blanchett, or?
I'd, I'd say it goes to the selectmen.
Okay.
Well, you got to get a call.
I'll add that to my list.
And then the selectmen have to get a hold of
I was three.
So many departments, I think people don't know where to go, so they're just
They go to Facebook.
Stuff out there until someone answers.
And then it gets fixed.
Yeah, just go to Facebook, that's what everybody else does.
You can always, certainly always talk to the selectmen, I mean, that's what they're there for. But if you have an issue that revolves around any kind of land, land use issue
About conservation.
Contact the building and safety, which is
Building and safety, okay.
Then he will know who else needs to be contacted. Sometimes it's DES, sometimes, well, I mean, it varies all over.
Building and safety.
But building and safety is the contact.
That's good to know.
Yep.
John, are you progressing with Sweet Hill now that their plan's approved? Do they have any timeline on next steps?
When they're going to be breaking ground?
Yeah.
You know what, I, that, I haven't had a, a pre-construction yet with them, but I'm sure that's coming up soon. What's happening with subdivisions now, they're getting their approvals, but, you know, trying to get their teams lined up.
Sure.
Get the contractors up.
Contractors, electricians, whatever, plumbing, materials? I mean, you, they may have presold some of these, you know, some people presold homes, and if they didn't have the right conditions in there, they, you know, then you hear others, they build a home, they're going, for $300,000, and then they get back a $450,000 bill, and they say, what happened? They said, well, in this back page, it said if materials go up, you're, it's on you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, the people are shaky right now. You know, they, they're waiting for things to iron out. I mean, this inflation factor that's going on with materials, it, it, they're saying it's a demand issue right now, and things just have to have time to shake out, because everybody's rushing to spend money right now. And it's driving everything through the roof, but that's supposed to level off.
I worked for Georgia Pacific Building Materials for years, and I can tell you, I guarantee the mills aren't running out to try to increase production by 100%. They may be pushing it a little bit, but they love where the prices are right now.
For them, they're finally making money.
Yeah.
I mean, for years, they, shouldn't you even open the doors, because they weren't getting the money, but now they are.
You're right, yeah, you're right. Yeah, they closed down a lot of mills over the years because it just didn't make sense, and they were selling money, so, you know, selling the materials at such, such low margin that it was, you know, now that the, the margin's there, they're not necessarily running out to try to build a new plant.
People don't want to say it, but that's the same thing with petroleum, you know? They, the prices are going up because they need to make more money per gallon than they were making.
Sure.
Steel, yeah.
You know, that's, that's a game that nobody talks about. It's great to go to a gas station and, and pay $2. It's not fun anymore going, paying $3, you know? God, you know, I mean, it was, it was relatively inexpensive, you know? At one point now, it's like 60 bucks. I used to fill up a car for $25.
Yeah, we're back at it. Yeah, well, that's why we got to get the bike lanes in town, Tim, let's get that going.
There you go.
Stop walking.
There we go.
Speaking of that, is, anybody have any feedback on the traffic study? Was there any additional steps on there? Did you know?
Not that I, I don't know anything about it.
The Main Street?
Yeah, traffic calming study, or whatever they did.
I don't think they do anything.
I haven't seen any new information. We just got notice of the next meeting or workshop, which I can't remember the date, but it's coming up in July sometime.
21st at 4:30?
It better not be 21st.
No, I don't know. Between us, John, we'll see if we can remember to have Dee send out a notice to the planning board with that.
We should have a GoFundMe page to get back into the regional planning agency, too, because the half-price deal is still standing.
I've tried.
We should be able to sell a few cakes for that.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we just sort of covered four, five, and six in a general broad discussion. Is there, are there any other additional communications, any other updates, FYIs, John, that you might have, and any other business or anything else that any board members want to bring up?
You know, the only thing I'm surprised about, we haven't got more plans yet, because there are projects being planned for, but the other thing I'm finding out is engineers are so straight out now, it's unbelievable, too. So they're designing and they get backed up, and when they're backed up, we don't get plans.
Yep.
Yeah.
Kind of a, in a good thing in one way, and, you know, but, you know, it, it just, things are happening behind the scenes, it just haven't gotten there yet. And I, and I think now we're just getting to a point where projects are being delayed until things iron out price-wise.
Well, there's one project I am so happy to see, Laurie's clam bar, the clam bar, coming back, and so is the chicken. That's our big news.
One of my favorite foods, clams.
That's a big news.
Although I heard chicken prices are through the roof.
It's not real chicken.
This is a chicken machine where you get your egg.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It has a little treat inside.
And the vending, they found
They went all the way. They went to New York, all the way to get a new one, because Laurie was not going to sell her machine. That's family. That's the family's.
All right, so no additional updates on any interesting conversation, any interesting projects we've dabbled on? Nope, okay. With that, let's go get some, enjoy the evening. We'll close the meeting adjourned at 8:33.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone.